Yes. Great. I'm going to call the meeting board, our chair is out of control, we have to be here tonight, so... Let's first start with our world hall. Start with Mr. Monsieur Manius. Chris Gordon. Jonathan Reimer.
Bob Nichols. Peter Kirby.
David Anderson.
Luke Kennedy.
Thank you everyone. Okay, first on our agenda is a message from the... ...R C B. Is there any changes? Make a motion for a group minute for that.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm promoting. Okay, so Brutus has indicated to... ...to the minutes as we... ...our hotel.
Alright.
I... ...get one voting, so no one but it's correct.
Correct.
Option correct. Yeah, and it's... ...made of... ...no conditions on tonight's agenda. So, on the new business, we have a... ...public area moving the ball. Regarding an application filed by Matthew Wilhelm... ...after a special use permit for a service industry auto... ...machinery barrel parcel 043-166-14-0-00-02-003... Sorry, 003.02. So, within the open that area, now it's 7:01 PM. Okay, so would you please... ...go over the... ...start the opening recommendation?
Uh, yes. This is for address 16844 Cora Road in Mayetta. During an aerial inspection on permits... ...I had noticed that there were a number of vehicles around... ...the building, which is this building right here. And as you can see, there were a number of vehicles. I sent out a letter to Mr. Wilhelm in March... ...indicating that he would need a command for if there was any change or a special use permit. And he did come in and we had discussed... ...the options. What he was doing there and what he... ...how he would approach that. I concluded that it would minimum need to be a special use permit... ...under Article 7, Section 3, 17R. Would be the minimum. And I was told that parks would not be sold as a parks store. That the parks that were ordered would be for the repair of those vehicles and not strictly the trade. So that's why I think a special use permit would be more appropriate than zoning.
Does the board have any questions? Okay. Okay, one more time. Okay, Mr. Wilhelm, you're welcome.
Hello.
So, go ahead and make your presentation if you would.
Well, basically, if you want to know what we do, I was retired and... ...my wife got sick with cancer, so I had to kind of start making some money. So, long story short, I'm out of the tow business. I said I retire, and then things didn't go so well at the bit. So now we're purchasing a few cars. Most of the cars on the property, you see there, there's that white truck to the very far right. That's White Power. It's getting ready to go on that other white Ford Frank, so those two trucks will become one. And a lot of that stuff is what it is. It's my own restoration projects, they're out back there, if that's what you're all wondering. Um, I've got a van that I'm getting ready to do myself, to go run around in and stuff. There's a lot of equipment there, there's trailers in there. The trucks, the red truck up the front, that's my farm truck, that's, I think that's the one. There's several of them I've got, but there's a... Yeah, that one there's got air compressors and stuff like that in there. My nailer. You name it, fuel tank, the boot fuel, my tractors and everything else. There's a dump trailer there. The cars up front, only one of that brothers, that one, the truck of the white by the shop, that is the customer truck. The one next to it, I couldn't tell you what it is. I think that's just space on the ground, man. But we usually have about three a week. That's about what I have going back to them, about three a week. The car on the end, that's in front of mine. And, yeah. The other truck that's over the other side, that's mine too. I've got a lot of trucks. I just do. There's another tow truck there, I don't know if I pictured, I think that's the other tow truck over there. So, a lot of it's mine, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Tractors everywhere, we try to keep the machinery under the shed. I mean, I can vice versa, move all the equipment outside and put all the... ...other cars and trucks on the shed, I don't care which way it goes, when it's in the day, whatever people want, but... But eventually, we're not staying here for long. We're probably going to run another two years, three years, is that what you think? If that... ...soon as she gets healed, and we're going to look and claim as a wisdom on that house. I'm going to try to... I build a place, if you come to my place, it's not like the rest of places. It's right out there, that's a small though, it's built like in... It's a real like a 1900s place if you show up. Long story short, I'm going to try to attract a bunch of money for it myself, that's what I'm going for. That's why I built it up, so... And all this stuff that's here, it is all going to be gone. That's a lot of, there's just a lot of equipment. Lots of foot. We're moving things all day long, trying to keep things going and trying to build. Our next big venture, we're getting ready to go to Arkansas, and the wise man in Arkansas is going to be our last house. And I'm going to build a one last small cabin. That's it. I've lived here 47 years, done the same thing all my life, so I'm, you know, for it to come up, it's a bit kind of something else for me. But that's just what it is, you know, and I understand, so... But do you all have any questions for me? I mean, I'm open for anything.
Did I hear this right, that the appraiser identified your property as having a lot of cars on it?
Yeah.
She called you out if you need to change your...
That's what they said.
Because of a lot of cars around their house.
Correct, right.
And Facebook advertising. Facebook.
I have no advertising on Facebook.
Not advertising. Posts.
Posts? Those are my trucks though.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that...
Cause I'm a little...
We also do a little research to see if there's business being promoted. And there were a couple posts, Facebook posts.
On what though? Because I'm going to tell you what, I haven't posted anything on Facebook forever, I don't know Facebook, so I don't... Like, I'm going to call out, and that could be... The last thing that I do, I drive a silver and blue truck sitting out here. Nits registered in Jackson County, it's got an antique tag on it. I spent two months of my own time, only working on that truck that night until it was done. And that's the truck that I posted on Facebook. I'm just saying, at the end of the day...
Sure, you made that, you made that.
Now listen, if they're tagging me, those people are not... We don't do work except for the people that are in my clientele that I have over the years. We are not taking on any new customers, just neighbors that we do, like most of it's farm work. But if you're talking about tagging, people will tag me, but I... You guys have received me respond to it, I've never responded to it, so I don't need to go and... I don't even, personally, I don't like people no more. So that's why I don't do business like that. I'm not being mean, I'm trying not to be mean, I'm just being honest. I'm getting to the age where I just don't want to deal with people no more. You know, huh, the last tow I did, the last tow I did, we got a goddamn gun pulled on us. So, I mean, I'm like, we're just over. And now the sheriff's office is, well, they've got him in jail for it. So, I guess my point is, is that, no, if it's a Facebook post, I've never even replied, if you've ever noticed, if that's what you're talking about. Somebody tagging and said, hey, this guy looked on your car. No, I don't do that, I... You have to know me very well for me to even do business with you.
Right, so yeah, that's what I've... ...locked up from this, just because there's a bunch of cars doesn't mean you're running a full-time business.
Correct.
And you said you only have two or three business...
Usually two to three maybe a week, maybe. And it's usually stupid things like changing oil, break shoes.
Have you like, have you highlighted to your neighbors with tons of traffic? Is that a rock road out front, or is that a chip in the ceiling?
No, it's all...
It's all rock.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. It is all rock. I guess that's my point, you know, I don't advertise no more.
Are you causing a lot of traffic on your road?
Right. There's people coming down my road that I don't even know who they are. Like I said, I've lived there all my life, and I was looking, I'm like, who the heck is that coming down the road? Cause they don't live there, I mean, Rob isn't...
I'm just asking, are you causing a lot of traffic?
Right.
Did you highlight?
No, no. Well, most people are the people that come over and drink coffee with me.
That's neighbors.
Yeah, that's neighbors, that's neighbors. But far as, no, I don't, I have never posted except for like I said, this truck that's on here. Those are my fishing posts.
So, just a question. Yes, so it sounds like you've got some vehicles that you're redoing yourself for your...
Oh yeah, yeah, most of them are on the property. If there's, there's a van sitting there, how are we doing it? That grain truck, we're doing the motor in it so we can haul grain. And the... All the ones that are here back, those are all getting taken apart and taken pieces off of one to put them on to another. Whether it's an engine or rebuild the engine out of one, so we can do another truck or whatever.
And then you've got some folks that you just do some repairs for?
Correct.
Three or four a week, you said?
At max, yeah.
Are you... So, the cars that you do, you plan on selling them there?
No. No, they're mine.
Okay.
No. I wanted to stay at one point, but we're just kind of to the point there. And I don't want to, this is not a tax, I mean, but the taxes are too high here. And we were going to put another round barn over on the edge over there, to store all my antique carts and motorcycles and everything. But by the time I figure it out, we ain't going to be able to afford to... I mean, it's to the point that I can't work as hard as I used to, like physically, I can't do it no more. And so I'm going to have to revert to something I can do, somewhere that I can afford to work and pay for it. I mean, the taxes alone are going to be insane, I know, probably when I'm done, I won't be able to live there. Actually, it's the payback. And so we're not putting up any more buildings, we're done at this point because we're just, we decided we're out there.
So, do you feel like that what you do falls into this special use permit?
Yes. I mean, for the most part, I would say so, I mean, I'm not business no more. I'm a farm, that's what I portray myself as. I mean, we've got cattle, we've got grow crops, I work on farm machinery of my own and other people and help other farmers. I mean, that's kind of where I try to stay. I know local neighbors, that's what I do, is my neighbor's stuff. In the case, I don't know why, there's a boat that comes in and I'll work on boats too, you know? And I'm not advertising. Just saying that, that's what I do at the end of the day. Cause I just work on odds and ends for people.
Friends.
Yep, lots of friends.
And previous clients.
Yeah. We tried to, we like I said, we didn't want back in. I just unfortunately know a lot of stuff. I bought a lot of stuff over the... The 20 years, I bought a lot of stuff over the 20 years.
Nobody else will talk about all their stuff either.
I've got to be careful.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying though, and unfortunately, I bring it in slowly to finish, to start projects and finish it for myself. Because once I leave here, I won't have the facility to do it no more. You know what I'm trying to say? We are going to, we're not going to have it no more, I'm pretty sure, so... Cause I'm going to have a huge auction here.
So you're not operating a towing company?
No, no. She is no longer registered. We have all, all the girls, they sit in the front yard, we put an antique tag on the red roll back, that is the red roll back. I mean, no, that's what that means. Uh, long story short, it's got an antiques tag on it, we have no D O T numbers on it. My vinyl plumber should quit on me, for some reason the U S P port won't work, or we'd have Wilhelm Farms already on the side of it. And that's what we're doing.
All the tractors.
We had problems last week, you know, you want to talk about things, people getting a hold of me, I had probably six calls last week just to tow. And I took none. So there you go. I don't want to do it no more. Anyone else have any questions?
Question for Kate, she would just explain to everyone briefly, what a special use permit is, how it works, compared to just a regular zoning change that was not that special use.
A special use permit would be complementary to that zoning district in which it's under. Certain conditions can apply to that special use permit, case by case basis. Do you want a definition of that, because it's in...
So, climate issue could put some conditions on that, or the economy issue.
Yes.
Especially for everyone's benefit, a special use permit is attached to the property while the current... Right, while the current owner owns it, yeah, once it settles, then they do more, we have to re-apply for that special use.
If they want to continue that.
Right, so the life of it is set, at least the initial life of the special use is set. Would that answer your question?
I think that's what my neighbor wrote me, he was going by student, he wrote me about it, and talked to me about it here. He said it to me before I had to leave here, but whatever. But, uh, long story short, that's kind of where Adam was at with the two, is that he just wanted to make sure that once I left, that if somebody was going to try to do something else, that... That, uh, long story short, that they would have to come back and do whatever they were going to do.
So a service industry, obviously, is way more than what we're talking, could expand into more than that. I mean, you're not going to...
No, not for us, no, we're done. Then when I leave, it leaves. That's what happens. Uh, that's over, we're, no. There is no sale of product. If you're, if you're asking this question, I'll, I'll get it clear to you. When I sell my place, there is no business getting sold with it, if that's what you're asking.
I was just wondering, let's say, I'm just saying that if you stayed there for another 20 years, situations change, what, what does that service...
I'm going to retire.
Look like? I mean, is that similar to, cause they, the letters talks about maybe salvage yard outdoor storage areas and stuff like that. And in this special use permit, would that constitute a touch? I'm just thinking, what we're grooming as far as what it could turn into, not saying that you're...
Right.
You know, just...
I understand what you're saying, but no, we're not turning them into that.
Yeah. Cause if everything can be, what you're saying, can be conditional on the situation, on special use.
Conditions that you could possibly think about are quantity of vehicles, fencing, storage of vehicles, things like that.
Can you put a, can you put a year, like say, okay, we're only going to do this two years?
That would be up to you all.
Okay, if that's something you could do.
I haven't seen that done, putting a timeframe on it. Because it does go with the owner of the property. There is that, that limit on it. I've never seen a time limit on these types of special uses. But it's up to you.
And somebody said something like, if you scroll down the screen to the north, oh, I didn't know that. There should be a, anyway, there's a fence right there, that's right between our house and the neighbor's house. We are the ones that pay for that fence to be put up, so they don't have to look at it. And, you know, so when you say fences, I'm not done. I, I'm just getting old, and I can't put down as much fence as I used to. So behind this building here in the back, we're going to have it all privacy fenced off, so you can't see like my restoration projects. We're going to not be able to see any of that stuff when we're done. I personally don't like to drive in my own driveway and use the crap, just so you know. I like to see it done up front and shiny, but I don't like to see it, but that's just where it starts, and unfortunately, that's the way it is. But there is, there will be more fence put up, if that's what you're asking. Cause that's why we've put most of the stuff behind our big barns, is so nobody can just see it coming in. We don't really want nobody to see it. But there's another fence that's between the blue line on the south, there'll be another one, there's a drive that goes down to my hay barn down there at the bottom. And long story short, uh, there'll be another fence there, so you will or end up tucking everything up behind that one there, is what we're going to do. Even if I had a car there, that's where they would be, I don't want them out front no more. Number one, people just seem to run into each other out there, and, yeah, anyway, I don't, I don't want it in the end. But right now, we're building so much stuff that we can't get back there to finish it right now, and it's just been wet as hell, so... Anyway, that's not done yet, but the stuff is all there, it just hasn't been completed yet.
Kate, would it be okay if Mr. Wilhelm approached the screen and then went into where the existing fence starts?
Your blue. Your blue is, it's right there, there's a shadow of it. The new fence, where her little arrow is, is going to be another fence. You can see, you actually can see all the privacy fence laying behind the building, right there. Put your arrow to the left, and up. Pass the grain truck into the back. That's all privacy fence, no, to the back. There you go. Right there. That's all privacy fence laying there, laying down. And it's going to go from the corner of that building to the road where my drive is. Like I said, I want to get it so it's all parked off, into the back, back there, that you can't see anything at the end of the day.
I think you were talking about the north side, right?
Oh, the north side, yeah, you see it, there's shadow up there. See the shadow of it? That's it, right there, that whole thing is a shadow where my hay bales are. And that's why I put hay bales down there too, so that nobody could pass them. I'm trying to block as much as I can, you know, so, we've got a lot of hay coming in, but the rest of the fence post.
What kind of fence is that?
That is a, what they call a dog beard, it's a dog beard fence, I put a dog beard fence up. It's not seeable, you can't see through it, so...
So I think this letter from this, your neighbor Adam, is pretty helpful on these documents. He talks about fencing at 300 feet. If you see this and you have any issues...
I can't read this, I can't read this. No fence, I can't read it.
Talks about salvage yard or outdoor storage area to be limited in size, the screen for view. An existing salvage yard storage area located for closer to 300 feet to residents in that kind of place for safe handling hazardous materials.
There is no salvage, so I don't know.
Right, take exception, you just call them just stuff that's salvage.
Right. Don't take this for Adam or Adam's guy, but... Adam's a real nice guy, but don't take the wrong, you know? He's from the city, so, he's from Kansas City, so probably ended up just like last neighbor, he's going to live there for two years and then be gone because he's going to take living out of the country. So, long story short, there is no salvage yard, so I don't know...
I think the concern with that would be with the towing company.
And there is no, there you go, there, that is over. Oh, and by the way, so you all know why I wanted to really get out of towing, and I'm giving this to you guys for the next tow, uh, guys that come up in the world. So, as I, you know, I was in for 20 some years here, well, not here, but I started out in Lawrence, Kansas, then I come here. And, uh, what happened to us was, and here you go. So, well, actually, there is a couple cars that I have an issue with, and I guess we'll bring this up right now. Can you go back to the back of the white building back there, please? There's a reason I'm bringing this up. So, when I shut down my tow yard, or my tow yard, right? Of course, you just can't leave your stuff on your property, and it don't seem good like that. There is a vehicle right there, and there's another vehicle over there, and there's another vehicle right there. I've got three on my property, okay?
You've had some cars.
Well, I'm going to tell you why they're there. I can't get rid of them. Do you want to know why? Because the state of Kansas made it to the point that I can't get a title for them. Well, if you don't have a title for them, I cannot discard them. And guess what, I thought about cutting them into little pieces, but that's against the law too. So I have to be very careful about what I do to dispose of these vehicles. I've actually got a couple more on the property that are the same situation. But that's why they're there at this point in time is because we would love to have them gone. But the problem is, is the state of Kansas made it to the point where we cannot get a title easy enough. Who is going to spend $300 to $400 to get rid of a hundred, maybe a hundred dollar vehicle? No one's going to do it. And it's coming up, I've talked to Tim Ray, Rob Holt got out, didn't he? And so all the guys that I've towed with, we've all talked about it. They're trying to do, they're still, I don't know who's doing the paperwork for Roush right now, I didn't get to talk to Brian lately. But the story goes is, is everybody's having an issue with it. And it's, it's come to the point where if you start going around with the locks, they're getting full. And that's why they're getting full, because they can't dispose of the vehicle properly. I quit, what, two years ago, was it two years ago, I just said, I'm done with the county. The reason I was done with the county was, they turned around, I go pick up a vehicle out on the road, right? Sounds great, you know, I'm going to get a free vehicle, right? Well, it's more likely, especially with meth head. Well, I'm going to come pick it up. Well, what ends up happening is, we go pick up a vehicle at 2:00 in the morning, I got a tow bill on this vehicle, right? So I'm sitting there and I get back home, you're actually praying at this point that somebody picks this stupid thing up because you aren't going to be able to dispose of it without a title. And 99% of the time it has, and here's the thing, if it is 10 years and older, I can get it to St. Joe. And in Missouri, if it's 10 years and older, without a lien, I can scrap it. So we will load them up and take them over there. But guess what, every meth head in the world, loser in the world, won't got a title on it. Well, at that point, I can't get rid of the vehicle because it's got a lien by whatever title on the place it is. So then you're stuck with it, well, that's starting to become an epidemic around here. Reno's having problems, Roush's having, Rob Holt had a huge problem, he's got ones and he's just trying to figure out what to deal with. And that's why I got out, I got out before I seen it coming. Like I went to go to the courthouse here to do the paperwork and that's what's ended up becoming a problem is, we don't really want the cars, we don't want them anywhere. They're junk, I mean, when you got the door panel off, the wires going in there to try to open the door, you're not going to sell that, so even if you got a title for it. And that's where it's come down to, is what I'm trying to say, is I wanted to actually alert somebody to make it maybe known that there is a problem out there and that is the problem. That is why we quit towing for Jackson County, the sheriff's office, is because we couldn't get rid of the car in the law. And I wasn't going to pile them up. I luckily had a friend that took over 23 cars off of my property in town here before we got it sold out. But I'm stuck with these three because he was like, there's just too much problems with those ones right there. Because we ran it through, we've got a system that we use to do bin verifications to check on them to make sure that that vehicle doesn't have any prior history. And there's where we started to run into problems, is those three there have big title issues. And it's to the point that we can't do shit, unfortunately, excuse my language. And I'm not the only one in this situation. So I didn't mean, what, I need, I think it needs to come somebody's attention because there's more people involved with this problem than it's me.
Right, yeah, you've got a problem, you need to decide whether you're in the tow business or you're not.
Got you. I am not in the tow business, so there you go. So there is no reason to have a vehicle storage or whatever to put down on the vehicle. Salvage, you're all right.
Do we have a limitation on the number of vehicles that homeowners can have in their property?
Two unregistered vehicles. That are not, that are开出, cannot be stored in buildings, but unregistered. Inoperable.
And that's no problem for me, I got plenty of buildings to build and I'll move farm equipment out, it doesn't matter which way to me. That's just how it works, so if I need to fix the situation, I can do it, just like that. Take a fork lift and pick them up and move them in and then I'll just move the combines and everything else out.
How much business does a business have to do to constitute a business?
Business? Any kind of business, I mean, it doesn't say, it doesn't give a minimum, doesn't give a maximum.
Right.
Just any kind of business.
So if a buddy pulls in and he charges $20 to change his oil, does that constitute a business?
I would guess so, I mean, like I said, it doesn't stipulate that.
Do you have any questions?
So you, you're just wanting to do this three years and then you're moving?
Even if that, yeah, good. Yeah, that isn't our plan, you know.
But unfortunately, if you put a plan on it, just.
Right, yeah, we need to talk about what could you do.
Probably, I mean, if he doesn't, then he always come in and re-apply.
True, if you got it.
When you sell the property, it's gone anyway.
Right, but if he doesn't, decides to stay.
I'm going to have to bear some weight.
Right, you need to operate like you're staying and you're not going anywhere.
Right.
You're in Jackson County right now and you've got an issue that you need to resolve right now.
I guess what it comes back down to is what you consider a business and don't consider a business in stage, you know. People on their computer all day long, so they'll put foot pics and everything else, so you can look at it any way you want, so I mean, people do it all day long. So I mean, it comes down to, only difference between me and most people is you can see the stuff that I did, you know. I'm not on the internet, you know. That is where it comes down to, and they probably make 10 times the money that I do, I know some of them do.
I don't have enough trees.
You know, I said that to you.
So I mean, it looks like there's a lot of business coming on there.
Right.
What's the size of the property?
It's a acre, it's all that, yeah. He's right, there ain't enough trees.
Okay, do you have any questions at the moment from the boardroom? Okay, one, one just FYI, Kate, thanks for talking to the city mayor, they don't have an ETJ, that's a territory, they're extension, I believe it is. They do serve that entire area through the water, through the water line. So thank you for letting me know, just how you're going to do it. Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up to the general public for any comments, questions that anyone has. First name on our, on the list is Geraldine. Steve, would you like to, do you have any questions or?
I will, I'll show you on my head. This is my property and I have a pond and there's a pair of pictures of trash coming. And it's going into a pond, which is looking in a pond. I can't have fish in it, I got pictures here, there's a brush gray, orange red water. And it flows down, and some color goes down. I've got ten pictures showing, I've got paintings, I've got petter trash, I've got a plastic toilet. I've got fish bones that are on the side of the pond.
They're not on your side, that's my ditch, and if it washed down there, I can't help that part, but, long story short, I see my fence there. And I don't know what you're doing on my plastic toilet up on my building. Were you the one with the drone that was inside my building? Because that was just spectacular, by the way, too.
This is the fence line, there's the plastic toilet.
Well, I can't see it, you got to bring it closer.
It's right there on the fence line.
That is actually looking like, that is a ditch that we filled, I won't lie to you. And by the way, that stuff right there, so Mark Myers owned the property, we, when we got the property, he left trash everywhere. And so we filled that ditch with this, with what was left of the debris and everything and buried it in that ditch, that crawl. And no offense to your fish, they're probably not going to get hurt by whatever's in that pile because it's metal. And I don't know what this is, picture it up.
It's just this stream goes into my pond.
Yeah, but there is nothing there that would ever harm it, there's no oil, there's no anything but metal right there. Yes, those are cans, paint can or fulser can probably. But a lot of that stuff is all due to Mark Myers when we bought the property and we just moved it down. This was a whole ditch, if you look at this thing back there, that was a whole ditch, yes, it was, and we filled it. And we wanted to get it up out of the deal because it was corroding away and so we just put everything in there.
And that is trash and fish oil.
I didn't put that can there.
Can I see that?
If it is, it's a monster can, I know whose can it probably is, it probably blew away, but it isn't our can.
And most of it covered in water.
That's rust probably, that's probably rust. Rust doesn't hurt fish. If it did, every fish up in the world would kill them.
The rust wouldn't be flowing, I got to see these pictures.
Yeah, it's rust, is what I'm guessing, I don't know, it's rust or dirt.
Would you tell me about the frame?
That was in front of me, that was me, my mom was on the side and I, I don't know where the closure was, and I said, well, it was on the side and there was oil and grease and stuff. And I told him to try to hit.
This is where the tow business was happening? This is where the tow business?
Long time, yeah.
And then the leaves were just taken.
That's the vehicles you're having a hard time getting rid of?
Yeah. Those are the ones we can't get tired of.
Okay, that is.
So is that like floating or is that?
That's in the creek, yeah.
So, so it's come from a ditch?
It kind of, like.
Anyway, maybe it's a lot more.
It runs like what's happening?
I don't know, no offense, a lot of my creeps I had growing up had rusted water, you know.
Right.
But it does run, it's not just his property, it runs all of his neighbors too. I mean, is he the low point, it's all that water? Doesn't look like it all comes from his property.
There's, there's three creeps.
But you made it wrong, you said that obviously some trash.
I didn't even know there was a crepe at one property, I also think that's in the ditch, so, yeah.
And there were barrels, I didn't work in those barrels, I don't work in that, I don't work with pot. I work with oil or, I don't have any people.
To me, that's being, being a good neighbor and not disposing of stuff of the property that I own or can travel to the other.
Only reason that, all the reason that was put in there is because of the cover.
It doesn't have anything to do with the business that was with here.
I apologize.
That's just a neighborly thing that anybody's going to have, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily come with this.
Well, I think it falls under this concern of, you know, having a plan for this possible.
That's technically any property you can't dispose right of, or affect the neighborhood, Roush, I don't think.
Right.
You can't.
So.
Legally piled up in a ditch and affect the ditch because.
As you noticed, there was about the dirt, it was stuff that we dug up that Mark or I had.
But that's not.
Yeah, I know.
That's not the basis for what this, I mean, I agree, but it's not very neighborly, but.
Are you still putting stuff in that ditch?
No, no, we wanted to fill it up and then we're going to get tops and put over the top of it. And the plan is, all that is that crap that was up in there, like, it was just everything in there, so. Getting ready to dig a hole to put in a storm shelter and I'm going to go down there and lay that whole thing over. So it's got fill all the way through now and then cover everything back up all the way through. I've got several, like I think when the power line company came through, there's a big hole from the terrace inside there. So I'm going to go in there and I'm going to level that whole thing out so it's level so I can put Rome in there.
Question, how long ago did you own the property?
Three years.
Three years, maybe?
Yeah.
Two years?
Yeah.
So you bought it a year-ish before those?
She was though.
We bought it in 21, October.
Okay. And there was already about, if I bring you a quote earlier, there was already a bunch of stuff on there.
There's stuff over the other, so over George and Carley's, they've been trying to get rid of the same thing. He had TVs out there, console TVs, and Buster shot them with a gun.
Blasted this thick.
Blasted this thick all over the place. It's just, they, he had a bunch of trash, you, you have a picture of that on your phone, don't we? Long story short, there was just nothing but like TVs, like houses that somebody cleaned out, like garbage, just everything.
Propane tanks.
Oh, yeah, propane tanks that were, you know, just a lot, oh, stoves, microwaves, that was just covered with it. He was supposed to get rid of it when he, when we bought the property and he didn't. So we had to slowly get away with, get it, get it out of there and throw away or dispose of it and whatever it took to get rid of it all.
This person on this is, essentially, I can't believe, I live at 1664.
Yeah, that's me, I'm with you. I just had normal concerns like the trash, hazardous waste. Excuse me, where do you live? I live, I'm on the corner and I have 10 acres that go back north toward you. But you're with her, but I'm, I'm one probably away.
Right there at the corner on the east side, 166th and. He's on the map. I need to catch your name, I'm going to miss out.
William Slater? I just had a couple of questions. The permit is basically, as long as he lives there, he can have a permit. Does that, if you give him a time limit, does, does a permit eat him from the time limit on the cars if you give him one? I don't know how that works, I guess.
I don't know, I'm understanding, are you asking if there's a time limit on it, how long a vehicle can be there?
Yes, are you guys, is that what you're hearing, I hear something discussed like that earlier.
The time limit was on the length of time a special use permit would be allowed, but I don't think.
And that's as long as he lives there, right?
Yes, and once the property is sold, the special use would be void.
This body doesn't really regulate. What do they call it, junk, you know, junk vehicles, that's really, would that be one of these kinds of, that are.
Yeah, for the permit.
That they handle those issues?
Yeah, inoperable abandoned vehicles.
Do you have any other concerns?
I don't know, if you can't get rid of, can you scrap them, can you call a junk car and come get them if that's an issue, I don't know.
Yeah, I have to.
Have to have time.
Really?
And it can't be scrapped.
State of Kansas, I mean, let's do the Missouri, it costs a lot.
You can't have the frigging, that's what's screwing. But I can always load them up and go drop them on a county road like somebody else's problem. I can always do that, I'm never scared. But if you want to talk about our neighbor, that's kind of our neighbor, so, you know, I would like to find a solution to that problem because like I said, I'm not the only one in this situation.
So if you're only allowed two vehicles on your property. Do you guys, do you guys force that, is that just up to whatever?
Inoperable, unregistered vehicles. We do get complaints from time to time and ask that people either put them in a garage, a barn or whatever. Or shield them, fence them in, they're happening in most cases. We act on it when there's a complaint.
You said that you would go ahead and put those vehicles in.
Oh, yeah, I got no problem, I'm getting ready to tear about two over parts soon as the 18th is over, my daughter's graduation is over, cleaning up for the. Oh, yeah. I got no problem. I'm getting ready to tear about two of them apart soon as the eighteenth is over. My daughter's graduation is over. Cleaning up for the eighteenth and after that, I'm gonna tear a bunch of them apart. And get it so I can get one truck together. And then, yeah, the rest of it will go up for sale. The parts will sell on the internet. Get rid of the whole thing, whatever. Those there, the older stuff, you know, it's like seventy-four trucking. I don't have to worry about those. You can sell them and all you gotta do is have a bill of sale and you can get a top from them all day long. But you can't do that with a two thousand ten or two thousand five Jeep Liberty or that, whatever. Jeep Commander, I guess is what it is. And then another one's like a Buick Les Sabre or something. Nope, it's gone. Nope, we made it disappear. Yeah. But you want to make them disappear like that for ever once in a while. That's the problem. You can't just, you know what I mean? Sometimes it's kind of screwed until you hit the right situation and get someone to get it out.
David Freeland?
Uh, my mom's concerned my mom's property with the pond. It's also just, it was the same property. So. Jolly for my mom.
Just you can get the other one on the list.
Yeah, yeah, I take it out. I do. I take care of the upkeep for the property, so.
Was there anyone else here? Maybe, uh, a lot of the, uh, any questions? Okay, go ahead and then I'll close the public hearing. Okay, um, one, uh, comment for the commission. If, if the board does decide that you want to have a dual, uh, dual condition, uh, special use. For that, although it included time and special use. The little demented to the word that may look, um, let's say something like, uh. The, um, maybe the three years kind of from the date that kind of the board can be commissioned. The, uh, food special, special application, uh, or, uh. I'm sort of getting from the word through the word here. Or the, or it would be regular special use that would then aspire, you know, when the property is changed or something with the words, whichever name comes first might be. It doesn't seem to be set earlier confused signs when we have that second class.
Would you voice our opinions then?
No. Yeah, I mean, eventually we'll be able to push it back somehow, but not yet. Question kind of related. So a special use permit really doesn't, would a special use permit really address any of the issues? Do we, would you make that part of the special use permit that you need to clean your act up? In, in a sense. You just make it, hey, you need to put up privacy, that's a cumulative stuff. A little better looking. And so that is the purpose of a special use permit. We can put conditions on that. So. I can hardly hear you down there.
I think, just by what everybody said, you know. Getting rid of those vehicles in the back, I mean. It's, it's gotta be done.
I'll make them disappear.
I mean, in, in my mind, you know, and, and hazardous waste is a concern.
Right.
And if I look at.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of the same concern that Alan shows about, you know, a plan to get rid of hazardous waste that doesn't affect. It's a neighborly thing to do, but it's, it's obviously a concern that neighbors have and. Those, those vehicles in the back, you know, it sounds like you're jumping, you're doing just on the fancy part to, to make sure.
I don't wanna look at myself. No, they know me, so I mean, I get that.
But those would be my two things that I see as the biggest issue.
I mean, we don't, as a rule, police what people do with the vehicles on their property. The only reason we are here with this issue because of the Facebook post that made it sound like we know a business. So now we're trying to do a business.
I see it's Facebook enough too.
Property is not really what our job is, in my.
Well, except that you can only have two untitled cars or two unregistered cars. Is that not?
We are, for the past two, uh, granted a huge permit. So moving forward, we could put in there that there's a set number, you know, of vehicles, what, and I don't know, but for. But it's. As far as cleaning up the back, that's. That's just a.
So how do you, that's not a. I, I understand what you're saying, but how do you handle them when the public's input is given and that's brought up by all the neighbors?
I do, I mean, I don't disagree, but I don't think that's.
Can that be added as a condition?
That's all.
Yeah.
I agree. I've got ponds.
Right.
I get stuff coming down from a business away from me, barrels, tires, you know, that, I mean, where else would they come from?
Right. Bombs, cans. Stuff like. And I'm not even saying that stuff is because you've given them for you, but.
Well, I can't, I can tell you whose can it is, but they are.
Just controlling what you do, you know, is, is the most important thing that comes to the.
And I get that, you know, I don't, I don't wanna see no way shit fucked up, you know, I get it. I don't want my own stuff messed up, you know? You know, I spend a lot of time to do what I've done in life and then make it as dicey as it can be. And at the end of the day, I understand their concern too, but that ain't quite finished there either. I mean. I, I'm just out of time. There's just too much things going on, you know, like, like I told him, he asked, and I was like, well, we're gonna cover that all the dirt in the end. That whole thing's gonna be covered and mounted up so it's leveled back in there. Nothing to be there no more. You know what I'm saying? It'll be all planted and grown so we can, can hate it. But, you know, for years, nobody did any. That place for years was farmed. It was all agriculture ground. I mean. Randy Rops who farmed since I was a kid and then Whipper bought it, Ding Dong down there, and then they split it up and did it into properties, which I didn't approve of. I wish that things would have been a little different at the time, but I was just coming home from service and things weren't working out quite right and financially, so I couldn't get the block. Um, and then my wife, twenty years later, thirty years, whatever it been, she ended up buying this piece. I said, sure, whatever. But long story short, I understand, but the conservation that was there, like, there's just ruts everywhere, like, you know, the ditches that were there because no one took care of the erosion factor, you know? And I get it, you know, when I went dug, I was like, put it in down in there. And I was like, we'll get it covered up and over. It wasn't intentionally to piss somebody off, you know what I mean? I don't wanna piss nobody off. Can I be honest? I don't even wanna talk to nobody half the time. So I just wanna stay myself, but I give what they're saying and I'll take care of it and make a, a pretty deal to make it disappear completely when we have the skid loader back over there and we start digging that big hole out and. Pull away a play layer down and we'll put top stall down on top of that and then it'll all be flattened down through there and we won't have no issue no more. Uh, we'll probably build a terrace there somewhere and ensure that, or shed the water down off to the other side where the ditch isn't there no more. Unfortunately, the terraces were taken out, you know, as houses developed and went through there. People wanna flatten it out so they have a golf course. Well, a golf course doesn't fix the problem of erosion, you know what I mean? I don't know. I've been farming most of my life, but it just doesn't fix it. Um, and the grass, the grass down through there, that's just. To be honest, nobody, I think it's hurt places and cleaners. No shit. The one that, is yours the one with the telephone poles that no less of these is in? Thank you. So anyway, long story short, I have to spray every ounce of less visa on that property, my property and the property next to me. I was the only one to put the damn money out to fix it, just trying to get rid of it. And I haven't ever bitched about nobody because I don't wanna cause any problems or any, you know, I, I know, I don't appreciate. I don't know, I don't appreciate it and they don't appreciate if I bring up something. So I just take care of the problem. I go ahead and do it myself and I take care of it. What I'm trying to say is, is nobody wants to take care of.
And I think that, that's not what I'm trying to say. You got the manufacturing. That's not what I'm trying to say.
No, but I'm just saying.
Not to add to the problem that already is solved.
Right. Yeah, I just wanna fix properly.
The biggest issue with it would be the salvage aspect in the tow yard. And that would be the, the hazardous drainage that goes on to neighboring properties. But if the, if the business doesn't exist and that's not part of the use permit, I mean, you put it in special use, but there is no additional vehicle storage or, I mean, it is an in and out repair shop if that's what it is.
We're trying to stay pretty agriculture.
As far as the.
So we're trying to.
You know, the vehicles in the back, that's, they're already there. That's a separate issue. But it does need to be addressed with the neighbors.
Right.
But that's. I don't know.
Well, I think the county is gonna make you do something with the cars or you get a special use permit or.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I get that. And I already planned, I'd already planned about doing that eventually here. We just haven't had time. It just takes time. And it's been muddy. I live on the craziest, sloppiest place in the world. And when you go out there and it rains in half an inch, it's nothing but mud.
You can't go down there.
Yeah, you ain't getting in and out there.
And get a claw down there. You can't get tuck down there. Our hole is not to have those cars there.
No, we don't, we didn't want that. Can I be honest? Sure. Just tell you the fact is true. The reason they're back there behind the buildings is to try to hide them so we don't have to look out. Does that make any sense? That's why we've done it. And that way the trees, you said something about the trees, you ain't got enough trees. Well, there's a tree line there and I'm like, well, nobody has to look at it. None of the leaves are off, so nobody can see the crap. And that's why they're there though, is because we haven't been able to, to dispose of it.
Any other questions? If you're interested in making a, a motion to approve the, uh, special use permit for the service industry, other than achieving power on the, which is stated, um, by itself or making a motion that would include some conditions such as, uh, uh, moving all of that to, of the, um. Non-custodial vehicles.
Yeah, one question. My farm trucks that we're using on property, we don't have to have them tagged, they're the ones that we feed with. None of my cousins have enough to do. If they run, like all our feed trucks, they don't, never run, they've never been replaced in their life.
Where is inoperable?
If they're in office, south end, that's no problem. Huh?
To inoperable.
Oh, okay. They are in office. Okay.
So you're wanting to continue to auto-repair?
A little bit, not much, but a little bit, just to keep things going so we can eat.
And that's the reason that we're here.
Right.
Because you want, you wanna run the business out of there. It's not about the vehicles that are currently there. It's.
Correct.
But it's a matter of the amount.
There's plenty of farms around this county that have junk vehicles stacked all around. You still don't stop you from, you're right to enjoy your property. You can and friends own your neighbors' right to enjoy theirs. So that's gotta be taken care of regardless. But, but as far as granting approval, you know, the business approval.
Yeah, I could make a motion to approve this permit. The only condition that it makes sure it controls drainage from, from his property, capture drainage. If, if in case that happens.
Right.
Are you making a motion? Yeah, I suppose I make a motion that we approve a special use permit. With the only exception being that any, uh, storage of hazardous materials, automotive fluids, uh, occur in a.
That, that, that.
Right, yeah. In a, in a EPA or a.
To protect soil and water.
Protect soil and water.
All of those.
In a burn dairy and a protective storage.
Fifty-five gallon drums and pouring the walls.
Right, because if you run a business, you'd have to do that.
Yeah. But fifty-five gallon drums, you keep a little fifty-five gallon, gallon drum. Uh, next thing is as far as, uh, disposal of it, we heat the shop with that. So every bit of oil that we do.
No, except vehicle storage for salvage.
And there's, there's no salvage storage going on. Did you catch that, John? Or do I need to say it again?
Hold on.
Maybe the younger guy could say it better.
So a couple of years to move, what are you gonna do with those vehicles? It sounds like it's.
Oh, we'll make them, he said he wanted them to disappear. They're gonna disappear. You ask, we shall receive. It might not be the way, but it's done sometime. So we'll get it done. No questions asked.
Is there a second to the motion as stated?
I'll say.
Um, it's been moved, sorry, correct me, uh, this is, this is abbreviated correctly, uh, to approve the application for a special use permit. I believe the motion that they're specific to a service industry or a, which you personally had. With the condition that. The, uh. Storage and disposal of hazardous materials, uh, occur in a burn area. And with this. Approved, approved, burned, or approved storage.
I like this one. Is there a, your chair at the point?
Maybe the plan will be in place for the second half of the storage and disposal of hazardous materials. See, but it doesn't say, it just says to protect. But I know when, if you talk about hazardous waste, that there are rules about how it's supposed to happen. Okay, so we're saying you just confirmed we've got this right for the man. Go ahead and exclude that entire warning.
That's what my thought is.
There. There was even a second question. Yes, second. And then we added that there's not gonna be salvage operations stored. Right, but not to exclude any outdoor vehicle storage.
Well, I think that goes that far as to, to not prevent.
That's what I heard. That's what I heard.
Well, that would be what my thought is associated with the salvage business. I mean, a farm can have a salvage vehicle, or up to two when the count is on.
Not running a salvage or.
And it's just, it's just appeasing the neighbors that there's not gonna be stored vehicles.
Yeah, so change that to salvage maybe? Is that weird? Instead of just outdoor vehicles, the way you said it, just repeat that again.
It's basically to eliminate the business from turning into a salvage yard. So it is not salvage associated to a, to the business. The form is different.
Right.
And as it is the towing business, if it's, it honestly doesn't. But that's where the general concern is, obviously, with everyone, is that the towing business was gonna operate out of there and you'd have to plant a salvage field. If it's a repair shop, it's an in and out type thing.
I mean, like, with, with number one, I mean, if you raise number one, you, does that address that?
That's what I mean. I think those, all three of those points are, other than the second one, because we're not, it's not salvage.
It's not a salvage. It's not a salvage yard. You can take care of business in this garage.
I've got a neighbor that has a salvage yard. But he can't take those three cars either.
Oh, eventually those cars can just get taken in for scrap with. Eventually.
I don't.
I didn't know.
So maybe the, the, Adam's comment number one, if we can cross off the screen for you, because I kind of, so it's basically avoid large scale. So it's basically avoid large-scale accumulation vehicles, parts affecting nearby, uh, property values and aesthetics.
Something like that. No, no long-term storage of inoperative vehicles, something, I mean.
I think, I think for clarity, um, it might be helpful to have the motion withdrawn, the second withdrawn, and then start over. Because I think, I think all we are is, right now, is a little confusing.
Yeah, I have a track that also.
Really, is that okay?
Yeah, we have a track of the motion, so we can keep that clear. I'd like to make them.
Do you want to help me? I can make a motion, but I can't, I can come up with some words and then someone can say, yeah, by motion of that. Okay, one possible motion would be to, um, approve the application for a special use permit for service industry auto or machine repair, on a parcel, on a, on a, on a parcel, starting with D four three one six six. With the conditions that, I guess it's, the, uh, the new storage or, or storage area, the limited size, to avoid large-scale accumulation vehicles or parts that could affect nearby property values and aesthetics. And two, that a plan be in place for the same, uh, storage, uh, those are the special ones, uh, to protect stolen or harmed property.
My second question.
No, you, someone has to make that, which I cannot make here, right?
I can do it. I can read it, you all can.
Okay. Does it, does that, does that work for you? Okay, so you're moving that, David?
Say that again.
You're, you're moving? That's the, that's the motion you're making?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I.
Okay. You don't have to repeat it. I'm just discussing this.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
You have a motion, move it in second. Uh, any additional discussion? Uh, before we also vote, did, uh, staff get that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Black, that's the question. Okay, uh, we move in second. Uh, is there any additional discussion? Okay, all over? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Anyone saying? So everyone has heard and made their vote, that's correct. Good motion, carries.
I appreciate it. I don't have to get on Vfinder dot com trying to make my living, it's gonna go broke. I'm gonna get a good paper.
Sure, I'll move to adjourn.
Temporarily.
Yeah. Second.
Thank you.
If you have any problems, feel free to call me at any point, I'm better. Oh, well, I'll give it to you before we get out of here. You're right.
Do I have a, there is a motion, do you like that? Okay, uh, you know, it's obviously that was the last thing on our, on our official agenda, so we can, uh, move to adjourn and go in directly into the work session. About the, um, city regulations, or we get, uh, just adjourn for the work adjournment.
Yeah, I think we should do that in two weeks, I believe.
Okay.
Can we schedule that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Oh, we also, there's a possibility, oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
And if we so choose, okay.
Right, there is a work session scheduled for two weeks from tonight, starting at six, I believe, is the, the time, the time to do those. And it's not a, a, a. I won't be able to be here that evening. I had to have settled things around my schedule, um, which, um, too late, I don't know if it helps you, uh, if you talk about possibly. Possibly going to visit one of those, uh, facilities that's already in operation. Uh, much one in Arkansas, possibly. Um, I may be going this coming week to visit a different one. Um, however, I will not be.
Why?
I will, however, I will not be here on the twenty, on the twenty ninth, if you do that.
Nice being just for one second.
That's right, I'll be on the second, we've done this, the work sessions, but I won't be back. I won't be available for that, because I don't have a real report. I'll be out next week until, whenever we will be, uh, if you don't, if it's not available. We can't really move back to the session a week later, a, a, more than a week, I'll be the second one. The board, you want to have a work session in two weeks, as I already planned? Or the board could decide to, uh, cancel that and settle it anyway. Or just hold my ash for our turn. If the month of this, is there?
Not yet. But they have a few days to get something into me, just, is that being changed for?
There's some feedback in that one. From last week, he said, uh, on the setbacks.
So, all of this.
I'm kind of waiting for other, for, what else we're doing.
Just want to have, have a work session that the, uh, everybody's scheduled, June, um, other than you tonight. We would have. Just, because obviously, the, also, it needs a note for the ten, ten eight.
He's just asking for one, like, I mean, the work session, which we.
This.
Yes. Okay, can I go ahead and have one on my second?
Yeah, I think we should continue this schedule.
Okay. Thanks for that question.
If you have specific, uh, comments from your tour, then email them or, I mean, send them to me. I, we'll not be able to talk about what you, you know, your opinions, but if you said.
Right, that, that's an option, it's just, um.
Just wait.
Best desirable.
Right.
Right. Is there any questions? I think I can answer them. Okay, I think I can start that for question meeting, so, okay, we should adjourn.
All right, you're here.
Okay, you're moving some action to adjourn?
We're starting.